Welcome to the Monday, October 13th, 2025 meeting of the Norwalk-Lamarada Unified School District Board of Education. We will start with a attendance, please.
Brooke.
Ms. Free?
Here.
Ms. Mesqua?
Here.
Mrs. Langenwalter?
Here.
Dr. Bedari?
Here.
Dr. Consio?
Here.
And Dr. Brassoff?
Here. All right. This time it would be the opportunity for citizens to address the board on matters within the purview of the closed session agenda. We have five cards. Are there anybody online?
We do not have any online comments this time.
So, beginning with, so each card, please keep your comments to three minutes and make sure they are dealing with items that are within the closed session agenda, you know, purview. Things that are not there, this should be reserved for the 6:30 time. Okay. Jennifer Earl?
Members of the board, I'm deeply grateful for your service to our community and for hearing us this evening. Our boys' water polo team would like to be here, but they literally just finished a game and they won 10 to 7. And, but many of them would have liked to be here. We do have a few representing us. I'm here to respectfully urge you to review and reverse the termination of Lamarada High School Water Polo Coach Daniel Benitez. By now, you've received statements from both Coach Daniel and Assistant Coach Carol Hernandez regarding the incident that led to his dismissal. You've likely noted pertinent information that sheds light on the original testimony from a concerned parent. While we all want our children to be safe while playing sports, we do not believe the incident on September 22nd reflects negligence. This decision appears to have been made in great haste based on the testimony of a single witness and a single incident, not a pattern. Coach Daniel was not given reasonable time to provide context, a proper defense, or to call on the testimony of the two other district employees that were present. Had there been an egregious offense such as theft, abuse, or a clear pattern of cruelty or neglect, we would have understood the decision. But in this case, you've now received strong evidence to the contrary. What organization operates under a one-strike, one-witness policy in such circumstances? Most would seek additional facts, retrain as needed, or offer an opportunity to correct behavior. We're asking for fairness, due process, and a more complete consideration of the facts. We're also concerned that the NLMUSD could develop a reputation as an unfair or unforgiving employer. Word gets around in a small community like water polo. Who would want to apply as coach knowing what happened to Coach Daniel? As you reviewed the statements submitted, I hope you see what we see. Daniel is a rare coach. He's deeply knowledgeable, highly respected by parents and players alike, dedicated to building a program that reflects both excellence and strong character. He's the kind of coach you want representing Norwalk-Lamarada School District. You represent the voices of our families and our students. So tonight, I ask that you represent the many water polo families standing behind Coach Daniel. Seek truth, ensure justice, and please advocate for his reinstatement. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Dr. Alicia Rivas?
Thank you and good afternoon, board members, Superintendent Dr. Baker and community leaders, and members of the public. I am here today to speak to you as a community advocate and most importantly, as a parent. Coach Benitez's removal has deeply impacted our students and our families. His leadership has been a source of emotional safety, mentorship, and structure, especially for our water polo youth. His absence has left many feeling confused, unheard, and destabilized. And my son has said it best. He's told me that Coach Benitez has taught him so much about teamwork, responsibility, and how to become the best version of himself, in and out of the pool. And these are lifelong skills. He's not just teaching me, he tells me, he's teaching all of us. Now, that kind of impact doesn't disappear quietly. It echoes in every student who's been shaped by his example. Now, I reached out to Superintendent Dr. Baker and district leadership with respect and with urgency. I now turn to you, the board, with hope. Hope that you will listen to the voices of our students and our families. Hope that you will seek clarity, transparency, and restorative action. And as Congressman John Lewis once said, "When you see something that is not right, not fair, not just, you have to speak up. You have to say something. You have to do something." I believe that this is that moment. So reinstating Coach Benitez is not just about one individual. It's about honoring the trust our students place in us and ensuring that equity in athletics is a lived commitment. Thank you for your time and your leadership.
Thank you. Ms. Andrew Green?
To the school board members of the Norwalk-Lamarada Unified School District, I come before you this evening as a deeply concerned parent. My son is a sophomore at Lamarada High School, a dedicated player on the boys' water polo team, and is slated to be the school's top swimmer this coming spring. He is proud to represent both LMHS and the district, as well as the city of Lamarada, as a member of the Armada Swim Club National Team. I don't say this to boast, but to advise that my family is fully invested in the aquatics program and we're very familiar with coaching. I have three sons who have been and are current students in this district, and regrettably, I have never been as disappointed as I was last month following the dismissal of our boys' water polo head coach, Daniel Benitez. Our student athletes are held to a high standard of integrity and discipline, and the same expectation must apply to our coaching staff. I have seen coaches in other sports lose their composure, allowing tempers to flare in front of athletes and parents. This is unprofessional and counter to the principles of dedication and emotional control we seek to instill in our young athletes. Coach Benitez consistently modeled and enforced these core principles of athleticism in his coaching style. Having had an older son in the LMHS water polo program years ago, I finally felt a genuine sense of hope that our boys had a coach who possessed the knowledge and commitment to elevate their success in this extremely aggressive and grueling sport. When I initially heard about Coach Benitez's termination, I was immediately concerned. As an educator myself in a neighboring school district, I understand the critical importance of due process and thorough investigation. My concern turned to profound disappointment upon learning the details as I truly felt let down by the administration who determined this dismissal was the only solution. I was especially disheartened for my son, who repeatedly shared that under Coach Benitez's guidance, the team had a renewed hope for a better-than-average season. The swift action of firing Coach Benitez, based, as I understand it, on a complaint and potential legal threat from one parent, reflects extremely poor management. This decision bypassed the essential step of due diligence, speaking with students, collecting incident reports, gathering witness statements, and following a clear progressive path of discipline. Coach Benitez was fired rashly for imposing a consequence of one player who did not follow team uniform guidelines. This was an unnecessary action. Had this been a teacher like myself in a stipend position, I'm certain the teachers' union would not have stood by while such an unjust action was taken against one of its members. We have conducted our own research and firmly believe the decision for termination was wrong. Our student athletes deserve to have their dedicated coach returned to the pool deck. Thank you for your time and serious consideration of this crucial matter.
Thank you. Ms. Brooke Godwin?
Members of the board, thank you for your time and everything you've done for our school. My name is Brooke Godwin, and I'm a junior at the Lamarada High School Girls varsity water polo team. I've been playing water polo here for three years, and in that time, I've had three different head coaches. My senior friends on the team have had four different coaches. Each coach has brought something different to the program, but with so many changes, it's hard for our team to find consistency and grow together. Water polo is a demanding sport. It requires trust, leadership, and trust, teamwork, and steady leadership. But when said leadership changes so often, it's frustrating and discouraging for everyone involved. Giving a good impression and adapting to a coach's style every single year is exhausting for myself and the coach. When Coach Daniel Benitez joined, things started to finally feel stable. He brought structure, enthusiasm, and energy to our team. He created new plays, encouraged us to improve, and most importantly, he listened to us. He had a way of making every player feel valued, and he had earned our trust and respect. We finally felt we were moving in a positive direction, and losing him now feels like a huge step backwards. I've seen firsthand that Coach Daniel is responsible and cares about our safety. This summer, I broke two of my fingers during practice over at Cerritos College, and I told Coach Daniel when it happened, and he immediately had me sit out until my doctor cleared me to play. Injuries are a normal part of water polo, and they happen during practices as well as games. What matters is that players report injuries so coaches can be aware. For example, during a drill called Snakes this year, which is where you swim in between lanes up and down the pool and hop out and do push-ups, squats, lunges, et cetera, you would do this until you're at the opposite end of the pool. During this, I was getting tired and started scraping my thighs and my knees as well as my hands. After the fourth time, I told Coach Carol and Coach Daniel that I was getting hurt from the drill. They immediately had us move on to a different exercise. All it took was me speaking up, and they listened. That's the kind of coaches they are. When I heard Coach Daniel was fired after one incident during practice, I was shocked. Not just me, but all the players on the team were severely disappointed and confused. He was building a team, teaching his skills, and helping us become stronger athletes and responsible young adults. We want a coach who supports us, challenges us, and helps us grow. That's Coach Daniel. Firing him without fully considering his leadership, his experience, and the respect he's earned from the players is unfair. I'm asking the board to please reconsider your decision. Allow us to continue the season with a coach who truly cares about us and our team. This program deserves stability, leadership, and respect, and that's exactly what Coach Daniel provides. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Ms. Laura Godwin?
She's my daughter. Members of the board, thank you for your time. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I don't want to be too loud. Members of the board, thank you for your time and the work that you do for our schools and our kids. My name is Laura Godwin, and all three of my children have gone through the district from kindergarten on. My youngest, Brooke, is a junior on the water polo team and the swim team, and she has played all three years. I'm here tonight because I'm deeply concerned about the dismissal of Coach Daniel Benitez. I don't know Coach Daniel personally. I haven't even met him. The girls haven't had their first game yet. It starts in a couple of weeks. Coach Daniel brought structure, energy, and pride back to the program. He united the players, earned their trust, and showed up literally before sunrise to get, to grow the athletes and form a team bond in a short period of time. So when he was let go in the middle of the boys' season, it was devastating for the whole team. The players were confused, and the parents were very frustrated. And now the girls' season is just weeks away, and all of our athletes feel like they're left in limbo. My husband Brock and I own Cabo Taco, a small restaurant down the street from the high school. We fully understand what it means to hire, train, and fire people. But good leadership means knowing the difference between a teachable moment and a fireable one. If I ran my restaurant with a one-strike policy without ever hearing both sides or giving people a chance to learn, I wouldn't even have a staff. People need to properly develop and become valued members of your staff. Talent should always be cultivated with guidance and direction. As a parent, I've seen how demanding this sport is. Brooke has broken her fingers, dislocated a shoulder, balls, she's taken balls to the head, elbows to the chest, and plenty of bumps and bruises. That's water polo. It's physical, and it's rough. But when she broke her fingers this summer, Coach Daniel pulled her from practice until she was cleared by her doctor. That's not negligence or carelessness, that's responsibility. Unfortunately, the water polo program feels often like we're the stepchild to the district. I don't believe the district should quickly, would ever quickly fire the head coach of a larger, more high-profile sport. The revolving door of coaches that we've had has created instability and frustration with the team. And now, just as we had a coach that all the players and parents believed in, that stability was taken away without considering the upheaval it would cause. This just isn't about one coach. It's about the culture we're creating. In the past four years, the girls' program has had four different head coaches. That doesn't build confidence, it creates uncertainty. So tonight, I ask you to really look at the decision that was made and consider what is best for our players. Turn this into a learning opportunity and not a loss for our team. Let's show our students that their voices are heard, that fairness and growth still matter, not in just our words, but in our actions. On behalf of all the families and athletes who stand behind Coach Benitez, I thank you for listening and for hopefully giving our kids back a coach that they can depend on and grow with in seasons to come.
Thank you. This concludes the cards for the public comment. There's nobody online. That'll conclude the open part of closed session, and we're going to proceed to closed session. Thank you. Can you hear me? All right. We are going to get started with open session again. Thank you. Welcome to the Monday, October 13th, 2025 meeting of the Norwalk-Lamarada Unified School District Board of Education. And we'll proceed with open session, and we'll start with attendance.
Ms. Free?
Here.
Ms. Mesqua?
Here.
Mrs. Langenwalter?
Here.
Mr. Rios?
Here.
Dr. Bedari?
Here.
Dr. Consio?
Here.
And Dr. Brassoff?
Here. At this time, trustee Mesqua will introduce Ally Hernandez, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Leading us today in our Pledge of Allegiance is a very special lady. Ally, please come to the podium. Ally Hernandez serves as Public Affairs Representative for the Water Replenishment District, California's largest groundwater agency. WRD manages the region's groundwater resources, which provide drinking water to nearly 4 million people across LA County. In this role, she leads the Eco-Gardening Program, collaborating with cities to provide free gardening workshops and partnering with school districts to expand access to educational programs. She facilitates WRD-funded grants that allow students to visit the Albert Robles Center for Water Recycling and Environmental Learning. Her professional experience includes roles in the US Congress, the California Senate, the California Contract Cities Association, and the City of Norwalk Parks and Recreation Commission, where she served two terms as chair. A proud Norwalk resident and graduate of Norwalk-Lamarada Unified School District, she earned a bachelor's degree in political science from Cal State University Dominguez Hills and a master's in public administration from Cal State University Lombeach. She serves on the Dominguez Hills Alumni Advisory Council, where she also sits on the scholarship committee that awards over 20,000 annually to support students' achievements. She regularly speaks at career days and mentors students interested in higher education and careers in government. Ally's mission is to build partnerships and direct resources to strengthen the southeast Los Angeles communities she calls home. Thank you, Ally, for your commitment and dedication to not only the Norwalk, the City of Norwalk-Lamarada communities, in our school district. We thank you for everything you do, and we're very proud of all your accomplishments. You may now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Please rise and place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no return until its end.
I just want Ally to know that I know myself and Ms. Rios are pretty proud of you for everything you've done. We've known her since she was back in middle school and stuff, way back then. She used to come over to the parties with my sons, and just want to let you know that we're pretty proud of what you have become. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Consio will now announce the actions taken by the board in closed session.
Yes, the Board of Education took one action in closed session by a vote of seven to zero to issue a notice of intent to dismiss and statement of charges to permanent certificated employee 13424 pursuant to Education Code Sections 44932 and 44939, and directed the superintendent or designated to send out appropriate legal notices on the motion of Ms. Free and seconded by Mr. Brassoff. Now, that concludes all the items in closed session, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have before us the minutes of September 22nd, 2025. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Okay. Motion by Dr. Consio, seconded by Ms. Mesqua. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. A motion, the agenda for this meeting. Can you get a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Before we do that, we're going to be pulling item 19I, Contract with Native Roots Landscaping LLC. So to adopt the agenda for this meeting, except for item 19I, Contract with Native Roots.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We will now have a public meeting, a public hearing, sorry, specifically on the topic of the negotiation sunshine. We'll begin with a district sunshine for 2025-2026 CSEA successor negotiations. Item 5A. Any comments on that item from members of the public or the board? Item 5A, the district negotiation. District sunshine, that is.
No, just excited to sunshine. I know we have four line items, but excited to sunshine with both CSEA and TANLA and open negotiations of this year. So good luck. Dr. Goddard, get some rest and stay hydrated, and to our respective union partners as well.
Thank you. All right. Hearing no further comments, so close the hearing for item 5A. Onto item 5B, the CSEA sunshine, sunshine for 2025-2026 successor negotiations. Any comments on the CSEA initial proposal through sunshine? And do we have any persons online for any of these?
We do not have any people online for these items.
Okay. Okay, hearing none, that closes the hearing for item 5B. Item 5C, district sunshine for 2025-2026 TANLA re-opener negotiations. Any comments from the public on TANLA's initial proposal? This is the public hearing opportunity. I'm looking at you. All righty. Hearing none, that'll close that hearing. And item 5D, TANLA's sunshine for 2025-2026 re-opener negotiations. TANLA's initial proposal. Any comments on that initial proposal? All right. Hearing none, that'll close the public hearing on the, on all the sunshine negotiations, both from the district and from TANLA, both with regards to, on both sides, with regards to, sorry, district and union representation, both TANLA and CSEA. Okay, item six, opportunity for citizens to address the board. This is on all items within the purview of the Board of Education. We ask that the members of the public limit their comments to three minutes, maintain civility, and please address the board in all comments. We're the ones assigned up to be, to listen. So please address the board on all comments. Right? We have, to begin. First of all, any, any online comments?
Yes, we have three online comments.
We'll go ahead and listen to them first.
Ms. Evelyn Acevedo, if you can hear me, you can unmute and begin your comments. As soon as you begin, we'll begin the three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, superintendent, parents, and district staff. I would like to start by thanking the board for your ongoing efforts to support all students and for your previous work on the Down Syndrome Awareness Month proclamation. It was such a meaningful step towards creating a more inclusive and understanding our community for all our children. Which leads me to ask, what is our district doing this month to celebrate? When you passed the proclamation, you also asked all schools to celebrate and promote awareness each October. Unfortunately, this year, only a few schools seem to be participating, and that's mostly because parents are the ones requesting it. Awareness and belonging should not be dependent on parents having to remind administrators every year. It should already be part of our culture and daily practice. Also, I do need to share some concerns that multiple parents have recently brought to my attention. There has been growing disappointment and frustration regarding a new special education program administrator. Families have described negative experiences and a lack of preparation that does not reflect the values our district stands for. We all want to work together, but we need leaders in special education who truly listen to parents, respect students' needs, and uphold the district's vision of collaboration and inclusive practices. I urge the district to take these concerns seriously and ensure that our special education leadership aligns with those principles. There's also been concerns regarding the sudden change in not having virtual meetings via Zoom. No training was done for the new platform. Teachers and parents are unable to share important documents or use the chat features. Why was this sudden change done with no advance notice or training for staff and parents? Lastly, I would like to ask about the IEP Inclusion Committee. Since Ms. Laurel Parker's retirement, we haven't heard any updates or seen meetings resumed. That, that committee was doing important work to move our district forward in inclusive education, and I hope to see that work continue without interruption. In closing, I want to thank those schools and staff who are embracing belonging and celebrating Down Syndrome Awareness Month in their schools. I love seeing the Down Syndrome Awareness banners posted on school gates and the blue and yellow ribbons as well. It makes a huge difference, and I truly believe that when we work together with parents, educators, and leaders, we can keep building the access and opportunity that all our students deserve. Because all means all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Acevedo.
Ms. Parker, if you're online, you can unmute yourself, and we will begin your three minutes when you begin. Again, Ms. Parker, if you are ready, you can begin speaking. You can unmute. You should see a button that says please unmute, and you can begin your comments.
If not, maybe we can give her a chance after.
Yeah. Our third virtual comment is not in the room, so we can give her a chance after the late person.
Can you call person?
They're not in the room right now.
Oh, oh, oh.
I've contacted them previously, let them know that we are on open.
Oh, I see. Okay, so we'll do the cards, and then we'll see if they, if they were able to get that technology. Okay. Ms. Millie Casillas?
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Baker, President Dr. Brassoff, Vice President Dr. Consio, members of the school board and district leadership and all present and on WebEx. My name is Millie Casillas, and I'm here Webex. My name is Millie Casillas, and I'm here this evening on behalf of Kiwanis Club 605, a service-focused organization deeply committed to supporting our youth and families in Norwalk and surrounding communities. Each year during November season, we collaborate with Norwalk High School with Thanksgiving food distribution to assist students and families from Norwalk High School and neighboring areas. Our goal is to ensure that every family has opportunity to enjoy a warm and nourishing Thanksgiving meal. This year, we are once again reaching out to our community partners, including the Norwalk-Lamarada Unified School District, to ask for your generous support. We are specifically requesting gift cards donation to local groceries such as Northgate Market and Stateo Brothers, which will be included in the Thanksgiving basket distributed to families in need. These gift cards help families purchase fresh items like produce, dairy, and/or turkey, giving them the flexibility to choose what best meets their needs. Your contribution will have a direct and meaningful impact on local students and their families. On behalf of Kiwanis 605, thank you for considering our request and for all you do to support our student, not just academically, but in a daily lives. We welcome any questions, and we would be happy to coordinate with appropriate staff regarding logistics or delivery of the donations and if y'all know how to reach me. I've asked I to provide each and one of you a copy of the letter that gives you more details. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lori Coggins?
Good evening, Dr. Baker and other administrators, school board members. I am very happy to be here. Let me introduce myself. My name is Lori Coggins. I am a teacher at New River. I'm actually an ITOSA at New River, and I have been a member of the NLMUSD community as a teacher for 30 years this October. So I wanted to address a few things that I have heard through the scuttlebutt of the community. First, I was really concerned to hear that one of the teachers in our school district was put on leave for personal comments that that teacher made on their private post on their social media. And it concerns me because as a teacher, I have my own views personally as well. I feel free to comment on those views, and I'm hopeful that you all would be respectful of my views and allow me to express them, and hopefully my First Amendment rights will not be trampled. Secondly, I'm also concerned about the rumor that there have been some books removed from our high school libraries in pursuit of banning these books because of their content. As a youth, I read The Diary of Anne Frank, and her unique perspective was so important in my growth and my, the creation of empathy in my life. And the books that I see have been chosen to be pulled from our high school libraries are titled The Bluest Eye, Glass Castle, All Boys Aren't Blue, Crankglass, and Fallout. I'm disturbed by this. I would like to read a short excerpt from the blurb of The Bluest Eye to give you some perspective on what is being taken from our students in terms of educational content. Toni Morrison's The Bluest Eye is a novel about Pacola Bradle, an 11-year-old African-American girl in 1940s Ohio who internalized the beauty standards of a racist society and praised for blue eyes, believing they will make her beautiful and bring her love and acceptance. I just want to tell you that when I first started here, we were dedicated to inclusivity and the celebration of diversity, and I hope that is not dying. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carrie Vaughn?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carrie Vaughn. I am a 20-year veteran teacher of this district, currently teaching at Southeast Academy and John Glenn High School. I wish I had more time, but here we go. First, I want to thank Dr. Baker for her speedy response in addressing the staffing issues in the Science Department at Glenn. I appreciate your attention to the matter, so thank you. Also want to give a shout out to the Glenn Southeast Academy Special Ed Department for really stepping up their game this year and supporting our students. I have been extremely impressed with their work this year, so check them out. Second, I'd like to address the concerns of my colleagues about the district-wide events that have been longstanding traditions, the robotics competition, the honor band, the art show, and STEM nights. These were coordinated by the district TOSSAs that you sent back to the classroom. What's the district's plan for these events? Are they no longer aligned with our district's vision? Is this just incompetence or a blatant disregard for the traditions we've built in this district? But I hear there's $1.7 million for school security toys. So much for that deficit, right? The worst part, the students were missing out on activities that could really add value to their resumes and college applications. Are we really preparing students for the future if we're taking away their few opportunities to shine at the district level? I also didn't get to express my disappointment in finding out that the last meeting, that there was a state of the district event held during the day at a different high school. I didn't even know about it. Seems like the teachers, being a massive stakeholder in this district, should have not only been invited but treated as honored guests. For once, you could have given us an opportunity to shine together as a show of respect and gratitude for the hard work and dedication we put in day after day, but instead, you chose to steal the spotlight for yourself and claim the wins as your own, which is an insult to every teacher in this district who didn't get to be a part of that celebration. Where was the respect and consideration for teachers and parents when planning that event during the school day, knowing we couldn't be there? That is so disrespectful. In regard to the firing of the Science TOSSA and cancellation of our district PLC collaboration meetings, I wanted to share that the work that we did at those meetings was so essential that during our last WASP visit, that work was cited on multiple occasions as evidence of collaboration and consistency within our Science Department. Without these meetings, we no longer have that as evidence in our WASP accreditation. Explain to me why this was the decision made, because I'd really like to understand. And I'm going to keep asking this question until I get an answer. I also want to share that I'm the only chemistry teacher on my campus, therefore I have no one to collaborate with in this 15-day challenge cycle of inquiry. I'm literally on my own, and you've taken away the only time I had with my colleagues across the city to do that work. So again, I'm wondering, if it wasn't broke, why did you fix it? You didn't even fix it, you just broke it. Lastly, I'd like to address the issue at Southeast Academy. Our secretary is being used in the Glenn front office, leaving the Southeast Academy office empty with nobody answering phones to deal with parents, to take in students who are being sent there for disciplinary action, and what about an emergency? Why don't we have a secretary in our Southeast Academy office the whole day? Maybe you can help me answer that question. I look forward to better understanding the situation and how we can work together to find solutions. I am a team player, but I just haven't gotten the playbook yet, and we're, we're a few games into the season, you guys. Anyway, I'm ready to learn whenever you guys are ready to communicate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Catherine Arcasola?
Hello, good evening. Good evening, Dr. Baker. Good evening, Board members. My name is Catherine Arcasola. I'm here because I have some concerns when it comes to Glacier Elementary School. So just to start, I transferred both my kids to Glacier so that they can both grow and learn together in the community that we live in. But as the month has, we're two months into the school, and I'm just really concerned about some things. So just to show you guys, this is the bruise that my son came home with. This is not the first time. He has also come home with other marks, scratches, and there is no notes at home. There is no incident report. He has hurt his head once. It took me about three days to get an incident report. So Leo's class, he's in ASC. He has 14 students that right now it's supposed to be a mild moderate class, and they have very, very much require higher level, higher levels of emotional support as well as behavioral support. These kids are running away during school. They're going into the, to the cafeteria, and it's very hard for the staff that's there to manage them. We have one aide that's been gone for three and a half weeks, and we didn't have any, any backup. I did call Mr. Jim. He did let me know that there was a list that is given from the district, that that list has people that can come and support. When I asked Dr. Newcomb about this, she said, no, I do call, but nobody ever comes. So then it was explained to me on a first come, first served basis, but still, these kids are left alone. It's 14 kids versus one aide and one teacher. And this is not just in one's class, this is in all of the ASC classes. I have to have, I have to come in every day since last Wednesday to spend lunch and breakfast with my son so that he's not running away from them and he doesn't come home marked up anymore. Every single day. I leave, I leave the school at nine, I come back at 11:00. It's every single day. I don't think that, I don't want to overstep the aides' jobs, but I also don't trust people there anymore. It hasn't been just staff, it's been regular general and staff that's been pulling the kids by the arms when they have behavioral issues. And my concern is, are we pulling these kids and we're going to pop their sockets? What's going to happen? My kid came home with a bruise. This time, what's going to happen next? I don't know how else to address this. I also want to address the fact that there's bullying in that school that is not addressed. My daughter was bullied in the beginning of the school year, come to find out she was being bullied since kindergarten. When I brought this up to Dr. Newcomb, she offered my child an $11 in and out coupon and an award of excellence. Excellence for what? For being bullied and not saying anything? When I asked her for consequences and accountability, she did not reply to me. So I had to find the parent and speak to the parent. When I did that, she came up to me and told me I was no longer allowed to speak to this parent. I have to do what I have to do for my kids. I hope you guys please address this. Thank you.
Erica Aguilar?
Okay. Good evening, President Rashoff, Vice Chair Consio, Dr. Baker, and Board members. Firstly, my name is Erica Aguilar. My child attends Glacier Elementary, but I did want to explain that I've been seeing safety concerns on the Glacier campus. Two Fridays ago, I saw there was an incident that took place at the school during school dismissal. I saw a group of students antagonizing another student by throwing water at him. Supervision aide was inside the gate and overheard the commotion outside. The supervision aide was able to defuse the situation, effectively took action by separating the students. We need constant supervision, we need constant support from supervision. Usually, Dr. Newcomb is out there, but this is, but on this specific day, there was no one out there. Either way, this is not just a one-person job. We need supervision for all students, especially during dismissal when students are exiting the grounds. However, there has been another incident where I driven by and seen an ambulance at the school. Safety should be our first priority for every school and every student. How can we get more hours or coverage for supervision aides? As our school seems to have minimal support, how are other schools utilizing their supervision aides on campus with limited funding? Which leads me to the sped coverage. We've had a sped class that has been operating with one para and a teacher. Although paperwork has stated there is coverage, meaning two paras, there isn't. Specifically, there was a para that was out for a month, and the class had no subpara in place. Why aren't admin going into the school site to take parents' concerns seriously? Our students and teachers are in need of support with paras that have DIBS training, that is Direct Intense Behavioral Support, and CPI training, crisis prevention intervention. The principal is looking for resources from within the school, but demands cannot always be met. We need to be making sure that our sped classes are being fully supported. The system right now is to call a list of paras, and when no one is being sent over, then what? The staff has no support trying to manage the day-to-day with students with behaviors. Please check in person if sped classes are out of ratio. If we are out of ratio, we need to start thinking about opening more classes since we are filling up the sped classes for the mild mod. Before I leave, I wanted to invite anyone who is interested in the SALPA Special Ed Local Plan area, please join us in our upcoming meeting for CAC Community Advisory Committee on Thursday, October 16th. It's from 10:00 AM to 11:30 in person at the District Special Ed Conference Room, Room 36. We discuss what the community needs, supports, and even resources to help our students receiving special ed services. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Ms. Jennifer Earl?
Hello, members of the board. I'll be speaking on behalf of my son, Soran Earl, who wasn't able to make it tonight because he's working on his AP US History studying. So he says, hello, members of the Norwalk-Lamarada Unified School District Board of Education. My name is Soran Earl, and I'm one of the captains of the water polo team at LMHS. I would like to assure the district that Coach Daniel is a fantastic coach, and it's, is dedicated to the well-being of the Lamarada water polo team. He always wanted the best for us and was willing to work with us to achieve the best we could. Coach Daniel always expected us to push ourselves and work harder, but he never expected us to do something that would cause us harm or undo pain. After a rough game, I had a minor injury to my knee, and Coach Daniel was willing to work with me to find different exercises that would not further injure it. Coach Daniel was never vindictive, and he never dealt out punishment for the sake of pain. I would like to report my account of the incident that led to the firing of Coach Daniel. On Monday, I was on the pool deck to do some stretching with a resistance band. Jaden arrived to practice without his speedo, so Coach Daniel told him he would have to do bear crawls to make up for not being able to participate in the water. Chris Fonseca was grabbing something out of his bag and volunteered to show Jaden the correct form, as he frequently had done them for soccer practice. When Jaden started out, his form was, was correct. I can't speak to the rest of the time. And he would have known that there was unexpected pain very quickly. One of the facts relayed to the district was that Jaden's hands were too injured to call his mom, and Coach Daniel did not apply first aid or call Jaden's parents. From my observations, this appears to be untrue. After practice, I saw Jaden sitting on the steps outside one of the side gates, playing a game on his phone. I could tell you the exact one. He told me his hands hurt and were very sensitive, but the injured areas were not spread across his entire hand. If Jaden's hands were too injured to call his mother, then he could not have been playing the game. One of my teammates told me that Jaden was at school the next day and was joking, asking something like, do these look like burns? I must again reaffirm that Coach Daniel is a man of character, who despite his short time with our district, deserved a fair outcome and a greater consideration than he received. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'd also like to thank myself. I'd like to commend Coach Daniel for handling his situation with incredible grace, and he's continued to cheer our students on from the sidelines, from, from the stands as a spectator. And I'd also like to commend Coach Carroll, who took over his position at very short notice with incredible grace and professionalism. And I'd like to dismiss us because Coach Carroll and Brooke have practice at 6:00 AM tomorrow, so thank you for hearing us.
Thank you. And Ms. Natalia Valades?
President Rashoff, Vice President Consio, School Board members, Superintendent Dr. Baker, and guests. My name is Natalia Valades. I'm a teacher at Norwalk High School, and I just want to make sure that you, to invite you tomorrow to our celebration for our Civic Learning Award. It's going to be tomorrow at 12 o'clock in the gym. We actually have three judges coming, Commissioner Brigura, Judge Diaz, and Judge Sidney Panuco, who is actually an alum from Norwalk High School and graduated in 1999. And so we have three judges coming and a representative from Senator Archuleta's office. office coming to the event tomorrow. So we hope you can come. It's gonna be a presentation of the, uh, award and then it's gonna be following with an Otha Office for ASP and a Link Crew and Renaissance officials. So the judge will be administering the Otha Office to our students. So we hope you can make it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, returning to the online comments, if we can hear them.
Uh, President Brashoff, the, um, the, uh, people who registered online actually have left the virtual waiting room. So they're no longer in there. They've actually been gone for about five minutes now.
All right. My apologies. If, uh, if they are still, uh, here us, we would encourage you to, uh, please bring your comments next time as well. We do want to hear from everybody. Sorry that it didn't work out with the technology. Next time we have, uh, item number seven, the Board Committee Reports. As, uh, maybe aware, the, there is, uh, subcommittees of the board formed and that had, uh, that had meetings. Uh, so we'll start with Dr. Conseil. An update on the October 2nd Board Budget Committee Meeting.
Yes. Um, thank you, President Brashoff. So I'm excited to report that the, uh, Board Budget Committee Meeting happened on October 2nd. Um, it was very meaningful and, and I think it was very enriching. We were able to, to take a closer look at every single grant that the district has received, state, federal, um, and private grants, um, for our district in the last five years. Uh, but in particular, I want to focus on a few things. So first point is that work is currently underway, uh, with council to establish a new District 5013C Foundation. And so the goal here is essentially to raise unrestricted dollars, uh, through community partnerships and events. Uh, drafting is about three quarters away completed and the foundation priorities will include a stronger auditing and a monitoring of categorical balances and carryovers. And so this is a great way for our district to receive more funds, um, outside the traditional ways that we have been receiving them. It's very customary for other districts, uh, to have a foundation. Uh, for example, even, uh, local, in, in our local, um, municipalities, Lamarada has the Lamarada Foundation. So very, very similar. Um, second, we were discussing also focusing on Project Lead the Way, um, and internships and looking back at the Puente Program that we once had in the district. Uh, so we requested follow-ups on current funding levels for Project Lead the Way, um, and the scope of student internships. Uh, so once we receive the report, we'll be able to really understand, um, if it's something that, you know, uh, our students are actually taking advantage of, uh, more, if we have to double down and, and seek more opportunities. Uh, but in those opportunities, we, we see other relationships that could develop with other shareholders and stakeholders. And so the committee also discussed interests and programs like the Puente Program, which I mentioned before, uh, we last had at Norwalk High School, and how they could expand partnerships with employers, chambers of commerce, and other higher educations. And on the topic of higher education, uh, we discussed university partnerships and, and research grants. So currently, we don't have, um, any active university partnerships. We do have a relationship, or we have relationships with, uh, institutions of higher education, um, and in particular, the focus on research grants. So the emphasis is really on building collaborative relationships with Biola University and other universities for potential research grants. Um, for example, the School of Education and discussion included benchmarking against nearby districts that have secured larger external grants, um, and really exploring a district-wide strategy to grow that, uh, our grant portfolio. Um, and so we also will be receiving quarterly updates. Administration District, um, leadership will bring quarterly reports on grant applications and hopefully progress towards our portfolio growth and the status of our key programs. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. I will also report on the, um, Board, um, Policy Committee Meeting. We have a subcommittee on board policies. We considered three. The first one is in the very beginning stages. Uh, we reviewed the 2.0 GPA minimum for graduation. Um, the concern was shared that it lowers rigor and pushes students into less demanding courses. Uh, the committee discussed shifting towards A through G eligibility with stronger supports. And the next step is to gather stakeholder input and graduation data before any recommendations. So we're very, very beginning stages of starting the discussion. Uh, next, we discussed the employee complaint policy. The next two policies, uh, we have before us as a first reading on the item 24A and B, actually. Um, it won't be approved tonight as such as just the first reading. But, um, the employee complaint policy, uh, item, represented as item 20, 24A. Uh, proposed updates include, uh, having, uh, an informal resolution at first, um, having extended timeline to begin that previously was 10 days, um, and now it's gonna be 21 days, or at least if, if the board approves this. Uh, flexibility for staff on leave in terms of counting those days if you have to be out, you know, perhaps those days should be told. And, uh, clearer documentation. Uh, the committee agreed that hearings should default to closed session, uh, to protect confidentiality. And the next step is to refine the policy with the union feedback and bring to the full board, uh, possibly, you know, the next meeting, uh, for the second reading. But we do seek, we do seek union feedback for that policy. Thirdly is the, um, religious beliefs and customs, um, Board Policy 6141-2, and that's also the first reading we have before us as, uh, item 24B on the agenda. Uh, reviewed, um, we reviewed the implications of the Mahmoud V Taylor, uh, case, um, which basically allowed, uh, parent opt-outs for a curriculum that, um, uh, I guess went against, or there's probably more technical language, but, uh, that, um, that went against a parent's religious training of the child. Um, it allowed, so that case allowed parental opt-outs. We, we, we wanted to set forth a district-wide policy and to avoid being, you know, contacted with, with disparate opt-out requests that looked differently. So the goal is to have a consistent form, district-wide opt-out form for families and, uh, consistent with Mahmoud V Taylor. Uh, we clarified that choirs and bands, you know, may perform religious music if instructional. There was a sentence in there that was really helpful and that's all, all discussion of religion should be academic, not devotional. And so that was, you know, hardly agreed to. Um, and then, uh, schools that should provide, uh, alternatives for students to opt out of celebrations. Um, the next step is, um, move to the board, full board with clarifications. And again, this is the first reading. Um, if there's, you know, comments or suggestions or, uh, by my colleagues, uh, when we get to that 24B and then, um, if we incorporate those and then to bring it for a second reading, uh, at the next meeting possibly. And that concludes the Board Policy Committee Meeting, uh, presentation. Uh, and now we'll turn it over to Ms. Mesqua to provide a update on the process for board self-evaluation and process for superintendent evaluation committee meeting.
Okay. Our committee met on October 9th. We continue refining both the board self-evaluation and the superintendent evaluation process. The board self-evaluation draft aligns with the governance handbook and will be reviewed and refined by Dr. Sandy Lyon and Terlen Finders for clarity and consistency. They've been supporting us through the process. We discussed logistics for collecting and compiling board responses with the evaluation tentatively scheduled for January 2026. Dr. Baker presented a revised superintendent evaluation tool, incorporating SMART goals, measurable indicators, and capsule standards. We emphasize that the process should be growth-focused, transparent, and supportive with quarterly progress updates included. The committee agreed to avoid assigning a single overall rating score or score, focusing instead on specific actionable feedback. Our next steps include incorporating revisions from Dr. Lyon and Ms. Finders, refining the superintendent evaluation template, and finalizing the overall timeline and implementation plan at the next meeting. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Mesqua. Uh, we'll turn it over to Dr. Baker now for the superintendent's report.
Good evening, board members and members of the community. Um, this week, or last weekend, rather, we had an opportunity to ride in, uh, the, uh, Norwalk, uh, Halloween Parade. So I had an opportunity to ride with, uh, Super Mario Brothers, Mr. Rios, and, uh, Ms. Mesqua, who was a very nice cat. And, uh, we rode with city, uh, civic leaders and a lot of children who are in our school system, uh, were in the crowd as well as, uh, parents. We also saw some teachers out there. So it was nice. It was a really, really good experience. Um, secondly, I wanted to, uh, just put on your radar that I'm looking forward to our second meeting in November. Uh, Ms. Mesqua mentioned quarterly reports. We're gonna have some information that we'll have to share in closed session about, um, some progress that we're making. We'll also do some open session presentation around literacy, which I know you all are looking forward to. Uh, so we are doing quarterly reports. What that's gonna look like for principals is that, um, we are looking to, uh, make sure that they have quantitative and qualitative data around academics, behavior, operations, finance. Um, but we're also going to be doing what we call an academic crosswalk. So we can see where we have alignment and where there's misalignment, um, with an action plan forward that's very inclusive. And so this is a process, but we want to be honest about where we are leading up to, um, our state exams. We also want to show where, again, there's alignment in our system, but there's also some misalignment. And then we want to be able to say, here's a path forward that's very inclusive. But we are gonna be measuring our progress, um, every quarter and sharing that information. So to all the staff members who've been actively engaged in that process, we appreciate you. Um, we are also gonna be having meetings with individual leaders prior to those presentations going public, um, so that, you know, s- school leaders, school site leaders are very aware of the progress on their campuses and challenges as well. Um, so wanted to put that out there to give you a heads up. And then lastly, want to make sure that, uh, we know leadership is a lonely job. You know, we're gonna hear from our representatives who represent our bargaining units, um, and our employees. Um, and so for a lot of leaders who don't have representation, um, you know, they're, uh, showing up every day and, and, and working as hard as everybody else. And so, um, we appreciate all of our staff members and want to also make sure that, um, again, we didn't do a resolution for, for principals during principal month, but we gave them some cake, uh, last Thursday at their, uh, principals' meeting and then we have a video. So Chris, I want to turn it over to you. Uh, every day to do your best and then, um, you know, getting rest when you needed and then showing up again to do it all over again regardless of how the day went before. We appreciate you. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. We will now hear from Dr. Kathy Alvarez. Uh, do we have a PTA representative? She's not in here, but will there be a PT representative? Anybody online? No? Okay. Um, from Ms. Martha Howrigie, on behalf of the California School Employees Association.
Good evening, Dr. Brashoff, uh, Vice President, Dr. Conseil, Superintendent, Dr. Baker, Board Members, guests in the audience and guests in our YouTube audience listening this evening. Um, I want to start out with a, I like doing my shout-outs. Um, Escalona just recently launched ELOP over at their, um, site about a week and a half ago. So I want to give the staff there a very, a big shout out to our secretary, our attendance clerk, and most recently, the lead teacher that just came onboard to take on that task. So they did an amazing job in opening it. Still little hiccups here and there, but you know, they did a beautiful job. So I wanted to give them a, a shout out to that. Um, I'm very, um, excited to start our, uh, CSCE successor negotiations. That is one of my favorite items that I like to, to work on. Um, it's, it's something that is important to CSCE. It's about really talking about a lot of the work that is put into this district to support our student education, especially when it comes to classified positions and the hard work that everybody does, whether you're inside or outside. So that's one of my biggest and most important tasks besides all the other tasks that I have to do as a union leader. So looking forward to that. I was reviewing, uh, well, before I go to my reviews, I also want to say thank you to the correction in board communications in regards to the grade level that was reported. And I really appreciate the correction that was made. Um, I had concerns. I do follow this data very carefully, especially for student enrollment. And I do appreciate that, um, there is transparency and accuracy, um, with this important information and making sure that all the right steps are being together, put together to, uh, verify very important data. So thank you for that. I really appreciate that. Um, and so I was speaking before in reviewing the board docs for this evening. Number 19, letter F. Um, I have a very, very serious concern in regards to this dollar figure that we're looking here. And again, you guys are gonna be doing your reviews. I don't know if you did a full assessment into this item. That's a lot of money that we're, that the program is gonna be getting. However, there was, uh, serious concerns for last school year with the CDE and the funding. And the question and concern to this is this amount of money coming back to the preschool program. Hopefully, some of this funding is gonna be utilized to hire our staff. And I'm gonna tell you why. There continues to be a problem in hiring our staff for our programs. Preschool is a very, um, it's a, it's a program that is constantly has certain guidelines and procedures due through Laco because it's funded through the state and through the Fed. So when you, when I get information on, on employees that have not been hired, I have a, I have a concern with this because we continue to have and talk about these conversations. So most recently, there is 13 para educators positions outstanding, 13 in the preschool program. Um, you know, you're missing these positions at Columbia, Foster Road, Glacier, Huerta, Ramona, and also three para educators, um, over at Ramona as floaters for disabilities, and also three para educators at Sanchez. That's a large number of para educator vacancies that are needed, um, for the preschool program. So if this funding is gonna be coming back, uh, to maximize reimbursement, the, uh, maximize the reimbursement amount, I hope that this money is gonna be allocated for that. Because as I'm speaking to you right now, a lot of these PRs have been submitted to the Human Resources Department and it's very, very frustrating that some of these PRs have to go And it's very, very frustrating that some of these PRs have to go through 17 steps to get through a process. On top of that, when it's finally said and done and pushed through, we're hiring these people, we're holding interviews, but yet they have not been cleared through their permits so they can actually start. So technically, on top of all this wait for these positions to do the onboarding, to do the process, they have yet to be cleared. So we can hire them today, they will not be onboard until three to four months from now because their permit process has not been cleared. So why are we hiring and interviewing when we know that these permits have not been processed? So we can clear these positions to either have a teacher, a paraeducator, or a clerical support to come onboard so that we can have these people onboard to run this program. So as you can see, this is very concerning. I do do my homework at any given time. I'm more than happy to provide that data for you, but this is most currently as of right now. So when I'm seeing these numbers and this money coming back, it is questionable. CSCE is questioning it because, again, we've had these vacant positions for almost a year. And there's been numerous conversations, but there's no movement. So I need to see some movement. And this has nothing to do with negotiations. This is, again, I'm questioning because of the dollar figures. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. Letter H, Zen Educate Incorporated. I had a conversation with the director's bed, and I do work very closely with our director's bed. And we're constantly outsourcing an agency or agencies to come and do, again, part-time work for paraeducators district-wide. We have positions for three hours, 3.5 hours, 3.75 hours, four hours, six hours, and so forth. And so when we are investing money to pay an outside agency to have their staff to come and do these duties that belong to the bargaining unit is a concern. Because some of these contracts that I see here is a lot of money that we are buying things that may be needed, but yet it's a lot of money that is being invested, but we're not investing the money where it's really needed. It is very disappointing to hear some of our parents come up here and address their concerns about their children. If we can have nice salaries for certain positions, why can't we have these nice salaries for these classified positions so that we can have the proper staffing to support the needs of our students? And I have a concern with that. New nades were brought up this evening by some parents. Paraeducators. Paraeducators work hand-on-hand with their teachers in the classroom. It is not acceptable to listen and to hear that you have 14 children in one classroom, one para, and one teacher. Unacceptable. It is very disappointing that as a union leader, I have to stand here and listen to that, and it's very concerning. So if we have this kind of funding to, you know, use and spend in other items, which I'm going to get into more detail, it is very just disturbing and disappointing that we cannot allocate the same amount of funding to make these positions, you know, entertaining so that we can hire and we can have them here. There is no reason to have up to 45 paraeducator vacancies. There is no reason. There isn't. There is no reason for an outside agency to come and do the bargaining unit's work. There is no reason. Because when we have this, we're creating a problem. Our parents come up here to complain. Our children are not being serviced, and the program is not delivering what they're supposed to deliver for special education. And as a union, my job again, and I'm going to be a broken record, is to defend positions. So again, I hope that there is a process in place and conversations to really mitigate this problem in this bed department. I also want to bring to your attention that there continues to be concerns with the ELOP You know, we can fix a little bit on one end, but we have yet to fix the other end. There's been a lot of conversations. Secretaries have yet to be heard, and I'm not talking about all, I'm talking about some. And again, every time I meet with certain employees and I ask the magic question, has the administrator come and had these conversations with you? The response is no. And I want to know why. There's valid concerns. 21 schools with ELOP, they all have different needs, they have different schedules, they have different vendors, they have a lot of different things going on. Everybody operates different. The Norwalk schools have more money because of Title I. The La Mirada schools don't have that opportunity because they don't have Title I. So again, in order to have a program to be productive and to work, we need to be prepared and organized before launching a program, to have the proper staffing accordingly with the proper budget and communication with instructions. So I'm going to continue bringing this up to your attention until I know that these secretaries have been heard. And district leadership has those names, and they have yet to be called, they have yet to get responses, they have yet to have resolution. So until that happens, I'm going to continue to come up here and voice my concern. Because if we have a program that needs to run effectively, then we need to have effective communication and a process in place so that these employees can do their job. But then again, it's not their job to do because ELOP is after school, has nothing to do with their regular job. But do you know how many times these secretaries are bothered and called because a parent has a question? There's somebody that's injured? There's somebody that needs a schedule? They don't have a lead teacher? Who's going to do the payroll? Who's in charge of the time cards? Did supplies were ordered? And the list goes on. We continue are having this problem. Oh, and we started this in July. It's already October. October, what is it? October 13 today. And I'm still standing up here addressing this concern. Here comes the big item. So two years ago, CSCE was told that we had to let, we had to eliminate a security officer position in the safety department because of lack of funds and lack of work. We have two vacant positions right now, full-time in there for officers, and one vacant position for communication officer. We have not been able to fill these positions. But yet, you guys have here in your board docs, you guys want to, they put in here that three, four police interceptors, utility vehicles are coming in. So again, I thought we were in a deficit. The vehicles that, they're not officers. They don't carry guns. They're not sworn-in officers. They do a beautiful job out there doing what they need to do, but really, what are we going to have these SUVs for? What are they going to carry in there? And I don't even, I don't even want to mention the grand total. It even hurts to even say it. So again, if we're in a deficit and we're going to invest in these type of vehicles, I really, really want to know why we're going to have these vehicles here at the district. Because we really need to, again, we need paraeducators, we need new nades. Our new nades, they're three hours. These men and women are working all day, but they're in and out, in and out, in and out. But we don't have money to make them, you know, at least part-time, three and a half hours so they can protect the children at the gates? We don't have this kind of money to hire paraeducators, to be in the classroom, to work with the teachers, and to avoid these injuries that these parents are coming up here to address to you and to show you. We don't have that kind of money. But we have this kind of money. I'm just disappointed. And we have not even started negotiations. So you know, when I see these things and I am reviewing and I'm reading, and sometimes, again, I don't get, I don't get to have those conversations so that I can have a clear understanding as to, you know, what's the need? A lot of it is what's the need and what's the want? I'm going to tell you something. The three high schools need new machines to do report cards. They're old and they're outdated. They're constantly breaking down. And then we have to call and submit a ticket so that a vendor can come out and look at it, possibly pick it up and take it away for two, three weeks, maybe a month. And then that data clerk has to sit there and cannot send out report cards, which is a mandate by the district because the parents are supposed to have those report cards. I sent an email out and had conversations in late May. There has yet to be a response back. Are we going to get new machines? Are we going to use our email process? What are we going to do to mitigate this problem? How come we can't find money to have brand-new and nicer report card machines to support the work of these data clerks at three high schools? La Mirada, John Glenn, and Norwalk, and El Camino, because they all do report cards, and Southeast. So again, if we're going to allocate and spend a lot of money, let's really allocate and spend the money where it's needed. Because we need to print report cards. We need new nades. We need paraeducators. We need a lot of things. But a million, 778, that's a lot of money. You guys have it in front of you. So it's not like I'm making it up. It's right here. So again, I come up here to address concerns, and when we're looking at a lot of money and dollar figures, we really, really need to make these assessments. And I hope that you ask all the pertaining questions because I know I do. Because that's my job. You have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Howriggi. Ms. Marin Quiroz-Grey will speak on behalf of the Teachers Association of Norwalk La Mirada, Tana.
Good evening, President Brasov, Vice President Consejo, School Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Baker, administrators, colleagues, and guests. Parent-teacher conferences. Our elementary school teachers successfully concluded a productive week of parent-teacher conferences. In this week, middle school teachers are meeting with parents. These conferences provide an important opportunity to connect with families, share student progress, and discuss strategies to support student success. Teachers are enthusiastic about meeting with parents and strengthening the partnership between home and school. This collaboration is essential to ensure that every student receives the support they need both inside and outside the classroom. Bargaining. Tana and the district have exchanged sunshine proposals officially beginning this year's negotiations. This year, we negotiate two re-opener articles in addition to salary and benefits. We have scheduled six bargaining sessions over the next two months with the first session set for October 23rd. We look forward to engaging in productive discussions that address ongoing challenges and strengthen our schools. We're committed to working closely with the district to find solutions that benefit both our educators and our students. We hope to approach this year's negotiations in an efficient and collaborative manner, recognizing that our working conditions are our students' learning conditions. We are hopeful that the district will prioritize what you value, which is your students. Tana is committed to reach an fair and equitable settlement agreement in a timely manner. Membership engagement and professional development. Our membership engagement team continues to actively plan events and activities to boost morale and keep our members engaged. In the spirit of fun, we've sent out our information about our annual Halloween costume contest. We're excited to see the creativity of our members and look forward to their photo entries. In addition, we remain dedicated to supporting the professional growth of our educators and strive to provide meaningful professional development and workshop sessions that align with the needs and interests of our members. In partnership with CTA, we will host our first virtual training next week on school side council roles and responsibilities. This session will provide valuable information and resources for members who serve on their school side councils, ensuring that they're well-equipped to represent their schools effectively. Meetings with school board members. Tana's executive board members have been reaching out to schedule in-person meetings with each of you. Some have already taken place and others are being scheduled. These meetings are important, an important opportunity to strengthen collaboration between Tana and the school board and discuss matters that affect both our members and the students that we serve. We appreciate your willingness to meet and your continued support for our educators. I urge you to prioritize these meetings since educators are the ones working directly with students every day. By maintaining open communication and working together, we can create an environment where students and educators can thrive, and we look forward to our continued discussions. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Item number 11, items regarding Measure G. Can I combine these into one vote unless a member would like to pull an item? We'll start with that question. Would a member like to pull an item from item number 11? Okay. Dr. Consejo?
No.
Okay. Okay, with regard to item 11, Measure G, Fund 21, can I get a motion?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay. Item number 12 consists of the Consent Agenda, which is items 13 through 25. Would any member like to pull any item from the Consent Agenda?
I'd like to pull two items. I'd like to go ahead and pull 19H.
Okay.
And 20A.
19H and 20?
19, 19H and 20A.
20A. Okay. I would also like to pull, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Dr. Consejo.
I was going to pull everything in 19, to have 19 votes separately. Every line item in 19.
All right. And I was going to pull item 24A, item 24A, regarding the complaint procedure. Any other, any other requests to pull items? Okay, so then with, except for the items in 19, 20A, and 24A, can we get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. I will begin with item 19. Item 19A. For each of these items, in order to begin discussion, we'll have a motion and a second, then we'll ask for discussion and then a vote. So item 19A, can I get a motion? Clarification. Is that a motion?
No, it's clarification, point of clarification.
Yes.
So when I requested pulling all items 19, I requested all of them to be voted together, not individually by line item, with the exclusion of Ms. Free's pull of 19H.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification, that's helpful. Any other items in number 19 that, any board members would like to pull? Okay, so then with the exception of 19H, can I get a motion on item 19?
So moved.
Sorry, did you move, Dr. Consejo?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, let's go out and do roll call.
Ms. Free?
Yes.
Ms. Mescola?
Yes.
Mrs. Langenwalter?
Yes.
Mr. Rios?
Mr. Rios? Dr. Vedari?
Yes.
Dr. Cancio?
No.
And Dr. Brashov?
Yes.
Motion carries, 6-1.
Okay. And, um, continuing with item 19H. Uh, and again, recall that we pulled item 19I at the beginning of the, of the meeting. Item 19H, um, sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Woods, can you, uh, help me understand, um, this contract?
Yes, absolutely. Good evening, everybody. Uh, this, this contract is for an independent contractor agreement with ZIN, uh, who is a, an agency that supplies, uh, staff for us when we have students who, or not students, when we have employees who may be on a leave of absence. So for example, if you're on a leave of absence, you still have a position, we can't fill it and hire somebody new to fill that. So when somebody's on a leave, we can call ZIN and they can fill that. We also use them when we have vacancies that we're actively recruiting for. So we've got a vacancy, we've got a post, we've got the PRs done. We're posting it or in the process of doing that. We can't hire somebody yet, so we might use an agency to do that. We also use agencies sometimes when we have students move in from other districts or other areas that maybe have a one-on-one support on their IEP already. But because they start that day, we can't get somebody hired that same day, so we use an agency there. Uh, we do always try to use our district staff first. Uh, I think you heard a parent say today that she talked to the principal, who said, she's got a list of people that I call. You know, the people you call are our district staff. There are district employees that can substitute. We also have people who currently work for the district that maybe don't work six hours, that can work additional hours. So I always go with that first, but the agencies help us in times when we can't use our existing staff. And as, I just want to thank Ms. Haragui, she said, we do continue to keep open lines of communication and talk about these things and communicate about them as well.
And is it because we're not hiring quick enough, or we just can't fill these positions?
You know, it's not that we're not hiring quick enough. A lot of times we hire and then somebody may find another opportunity, right? So we may hire somebody, but somebody else may leave us. Or we open a new position and somebody wants that position, so they move to that one, leaving a vacancy somewhere else. Um, Human Resources is partnering with us to, uh, do recruitments. We have, uh, positions posted out there. We continually are interviewing people and getting people in place. But again, with the leaves that we have, with people leaving, it just, it doesn't seem to balance out exactly as we would like it to.
So, okay, so when, when, uh, in, in previous times, when we haven't had any of these contracts, who fills these, uh, positions when there's an absent employee?
Um, I, I can't say, and I've only been in this district for one year and three months now. Um, but being in special ed for the last, I don't know, since 2008 as administrator of special ed, I've never been in a place where we didn't have these vacancies and use agencies to fill the positions.
I wonder if we just need to, um, take a look at the process now so that we can onboard quicker and go through that background check that we need to, so that, um, because it does look like, hey, you have all of these openings, uh, but you're not filling them, and then we're going to go ahead and contract, you know, for substitutes. It, it, it's just, uh, um, it, it is concerning, and if I were an employee here, I would be concerned as well. Like, hey, I'm only working three hours. I'll take that job, why aren't you not, you know, asking me to fill that position? Or given that opportunity, making it available to those that are only working three hours a day?
Yeah, absolutely, and we do have that whole list that we send out to everybody who works less than six hours. So if you'd like extra hours, please put your name on this list, and we'll call you first to fill these positions. So for example, if I work in AM at, um, let me say John Glenn High School, and we need some support at, you know, Norwalk High School in the afternoon, I can pick that up and do that as well. So we use those people first and go through that list to try to fill positions. Um, if we have, like I said, a position that just comes in that we haven't had time to even staff, because a new kid moved in, or something like that, then we do have to respond quickly. And especially with leaves of absence, we can't fill that position.
And how successful have you been in being able to attract, uh, to get employees to take on, uh, those additional hours?
I want to say we have about 24 names on the list. So we send it out to everybody, and, uh, the first day that we did it, a few people signed up, and then I think other people heard about it and started signing up. So about 24 names on there are people who work less than six hours, that are willing to pick up other hours.
So even with that, we still need this additional contract?
Yes.
And Mrs. Free, we're also working on a talent management strategy, right? Because a three-hour position for anybody is not desirable. You have to, um, consider your own family, childcare, and things that you have going on. So if there's a three-hour vacancy, even though I only make, I only work three hours, I also, in order to take the additional three hours, I have to be available, right, to do that? And so we're having conversations about if, if it's easier to fill a two, three-hour positions versus creating a six-hour position, right? And so those are some conversations that we're having. Um, I think what we're at risk now is being in a position where we don't have the staffing available, even with all of the PRs going through and HR doing what they need to do. Um, if we have a service that's in an IEP and we don't have someone available to provide that support, we're, we're at risk of being in a situation and looking negligent, right? And so these are, what you're seeing us do is saying, we're going, we're exhausting our opportunities right now, going through our existing staff, and in the event that no one picks up these jobs, and we're already, um, posting and we've gone through all that process and it's still vacant, he has to have somebody to call for a kid. And if he doesn't, then we are not provide, we're not able to provide that service for the child. Um, and so, again, the larger issue, the core issue is, can we successfully continue to operate with three-hour positions, or do we need to have conversations? And we've already started that conversation, so when we're going to board this year, um, relative to our budget, we're going to be having conversations about what these positions should look like, uh, going forward. It's very difficult to fill a three-hour position in any district.
Right, exactly, and, uh, sometimes it's just not worth the drive, right? Uh, but I also understand that behind these positions with more hours, there is a concern for benefits if the employee exceeds a certain amount of hours. So, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering how long would this go, that we have to call in, you know, uh, agencies to help us fill these positions, before we can actually get our own employees, increase their hours, so that they can fill them?
That's the long-term strategy, so when we come to board this year, we're talking about our budget, right? We're in negoti, we're going to be jumping into negotiations, we've got to talk about our, our cost savings and what, uh, where we need to restructure. And so, uh, Mr. Wood has already been having conversations with us, being the executive team, about trying to look at six-hour positions where you might be on the hook for benefits, but at least you'd have a filled position, more like, more than, you know, more, you're more likely to fill a six-hour position. Again, uh, financially, we have to work out what that could look like. Uh, but we're more concerned about how do we fill these roles so our kids have the services? And if that means six hours rather than three, um, and it'll reduce our vacancies, then that's where we're going to be having conversations. We'll need to come to the board with approval, because Mr. Sancion will be doing that analysis. But that's the long-term strategy for this long-term challenge. Uh, right now, what you hear staff saying is, we need kids to have services. And if we don't have a person, even though we don't like the fact that the position is vacant, that kid does not get the service if there's not a human body to do it. Um, and so, we understand the pool, the long-term strategy is our own staff filling the jobs, but we got to restructure in order to do that well. And he's already, um, had conversations with us. You're going to see some changes in our budget cycle coming up.
Oh, that's, that's great, okay, because it, it, obviously, it's, it's a child who we, we have to provide for. Now, I know that, you know, when, when our employees take a look at these contracts and we're paying, uh, so much extra money for one employee, and they're like, you know, are, are our salaries going up, are, are hourly pay going up? Because I see that, you know, they see that we're paying more for these services per one person.
There's overhead baked into these numbers too, right? Um, I don't know the exact numbers, but there's all, these companies are charging overhead, so they're not really seeing, um, how much the company is getting versus the actual employee. Dr. Gatto, you had something on this?
I just wanted to clarify for the board and, and the community that, uh, when it comes to an increase of hours for employees, we do have existing contract language with CSCA that stipulates a process. So we, we, as much as we love to increase hours of our parts of employees, there is a, a process, an interview process for that. Um, as you can imagine, they're highly desirable positions. And more often than not, our internal, internal folks get those positions. But, um, there is a process, an interview process for that increase.
Uh, Mr. Rios?
I'm.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Dr. Cancio.
Sorry, Mr. Rios and then myself.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, um, you kind of answered my question on the process, but I know there's, there's a long process to, to come in. But I do also understand that we may be underpay. So, some of these kids, you know, need very, very special attention. And knowing personally, I have siblings who have worked for the district and who have worked at the paraeducation. You know, they come home with, uh, messed up wrists because they got pushed, they got kicked, you know, I mean, it's, there's a lot to it. Now, we heard earlier that there was 13 positions. I mean, to me, 13 positions, the number 13 doesn't seem a lot, but when you look at the district, it's, well, yes. And so, um, when I, when, when they say 13, I don't see a lot, right? But when you look at it, even in one school, 13, I think it's not enough. I know we need to, to have, the longest that I've been here, since I got in here in 2020, when I first got in, I think this is the first year where I've gotten the most complaints from parents on not having enough people there. That they have to stay. My neighbor across the street, she actually decided to, um, quit her job, and she's staying. Um, she started at Sanchez, now she's at Lampton. And so, for that reason, um, because she'd rather have the, the staff and she volunteers the time. I know she goes home and comes back and then goes back again in the afternoon. So definitely there's something that we really need to look at as far as hiring. And to be able to retain, and, and absolutely, I think that three hours do not cut it for people, because they, right now, even McDonald's, they can bid, you know, I put, they they can hire for a little higher, and, uh, we, we really need to, to improve our services there. They're the special needs, they're the ones that can't ask for, you know, sometimes because they can't speak or different things, but uh, the frustration that gets out of them, I think is part of. But just the whole factor that I think we need to make sure that, uh, I hope those dialogues come sooner than later. I'm trying to get, uh, this situation as far as taken care of, because, um, if we keep outsourcing, and, I mean, I don't, I didn't even know, you know, the, that we didn't have a, or did we have a company before that would be doing this? And I don't see them, because, I mean, I get told that nobody shows up, so are we using them or not using them?
So, we do use other companies as well to try to do this. We only have a handful of people right now that we're using. And, and they have the same staffing issues that we face, so they may only be able to apply, supply, uh, a few at a time, and then they have to do onboarding too, and try to get other people as well. And they have the same staffing, uh, turnover that we may experience.
Yeah, and, and I think that's, uh, I'd rather have the, uh, the staff here that we can see, that manage, because if we call and we're not going to get anybody, I mean, we're still paying for, for a service. And so, um...
I don't believe we are. I think that, that's a, that's a kind of a retainer structure. When we need them, it draws out of the 250, but I don't think...
Yeah, but what I'm saying, if we're, we're having a retainer and they're still not working with us, then it's, you know. So I think we just need to really work on, on, on something, on retaining some of these people, because I know they, they, a lot of them will work for a little bit and they leave because of something, you know. It, it's challenging, and I understand that, that. It, it's a big turnover, that's just pretty challenging to be working with, uh, with kids. First of all, you have to have a, a lot of patience. And, uh, you need to learn those child, that child, especially if you're a one-on-one. You know, and, and as we all know, they, they follow them from the beginning all the way till they graduate, and, um, but unfortunately, some, some of them just can't handle the, the rough work. So...
I, I also wonder what it does when there's a new person in the classroom constantly. I think consistency is much better for our students, especially in special ed. Uh, they tend to do better as well. Um, I'm never, uh, a fan of outsourcing. Uh, I'd rather just keep those jobs within, uh, our employees, uh, because then it speaks volumes about us, right? How we value our employees, but also how we value our students as well. And consistency is extremely important in the classroom.
Dr. Cancio?
Yes, thank you. So, for me, it's more of a, a point of clarification. And this is, this first part's mainly rhetorical. Uh, Dr. Gatto, you said that these positions are highly desirable, but if they're so highly desirable, why can't we fill them and why can't we keep them? And that comment is very perpendicular to your comment, Dr. Baker, about these conversations. So, uh, my question, um, and I guess it's to, um, district leadership, is what are these conversations? Are these conversations, negotiation conversations? Are these conversations going to happen, uh, a year from now? Like, we need a timeline, we can't just keep saying we're going to have conversations on some long-term issues and never have conversations and never hold accountability. I mean, the buck has to stop somewhere, and this is a big-ticket item, to have conversations that are not going to happen anytime soon. And I agree with, with, uh, with my colleagues. I mean, it's a, it's a labor issue, you know? Why don't we pay more? I mean, I, I don't think it's rocket science, but I'm just curious about these, these quote-unquote conversations.
Sure, so thank you for that, I'm happy to clarify. Um, when I mentioned that we, this is a, what we're facing right now is not a new issue, it's a structural one. Um, folks are not going to sign up on a regular basis for a three-hour job. And when they do, they are going to take the next job that pays them more than that three-hour job. And so what's happening right now across the state is that special education is struggling with these three-hour positions. Why? Because I can go to Target and make more at Target than getting beat up every day if I'm with children who have certain challenges, right? And so...
Right, so then, so then we both agree that, then we're not paying enough, right? Is that what we're trying to say?
No, what I'm saying, it's, it's bigger than that. I'm saying that structurally, we have to look at the position itself. Three hours for these type of jobs, which are tough jobs, it's not going to retain any staff. Even if he fills the job, that staff member is gone the moment something opens up. What I believe Dr. Gatto was mentioning is that there's language in the contract that speaks to who can take which position at what, I don't, I, I mean, I think you were speaking to who can take which position. I was talking about the actual strategy and what we've been discussing and what the board is going to hear from us as a team during the budget cycle. We've got to get our budget approved every year. So what you're going to hear, and that, uh, Dr. Wood is already working on, is how can he structure these positions where they're desirable? Where you not only fill them, but you're going to retain the staff because they want to stay in the job, because we can pay more over time than Target or McDonald's or something of that nature. That requires approval, structural change, and it really restructures his department. And so, um, if you're asking me for a timeline, um, what I'm saying is in this upcoming budget cycle, you're going to, uh, be able to see some shift there. Um, but we have already been having the conversations at a high level as, as an executive team. But a three-hour job right now, if we do a side-by-side, you can go to McDonald's, soon as that job opens up, if that person has a family, they're, they're gone. Um, and so it's a, it's a real struggle. But can you just clarify on the contract link?
Yeah, sure. It was just talking about how the six-hour positions within our district are highly desirable amongst our three-hour employees. So that's what I was saying. But some of this conversation, this is a great conversation, but some of it, would be reserved for the negotiations table because there are negotiations elements. Um, when, anytime you talk about increasing pay, that's a negotiated item as well. Some...
Perfect, that, that's the clarification I wanted. Okay, so the, the proposed conversations about this are going to happen in negotiations. Perfect, okay, I got, I got my, uh...
Some of the structural changes, Dr. Baker, Dr. Cancio, some of the structural changes Dr. Baker was talking about are internal district leadership conversations that we are having and will continue to have to determine the trajectory of, of the path we take. But any implementation, if it's eliminating positions, increasing other positions, increasing pay, those components need to be discussed at the table.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, Dr. Vedari?
Thank you, President, uh, Brashov. So it seems that there are two areas that we really need to look at. So it's restructuring the position and then also the language for the addition of the hours, whether, from the three hours to the six hours for...
Well, the, the language that I was referencing in the contract really speaks to the interview process for those increase of hours. The... The structural components of the positions, that's a little different than the language I was referring to in the contract.
So for the interview, though, could there be changes that can be done there to mainstream that process or streamline it or like?
Potentially, but that, that's an element that would need to be discussed at the negotiations table.
Right, thank you.
Good, Ms. Free?
You know, we also, I'm also thinking about all the cost on the admin side of posting these jobs and all the work that's being done to be able to fill these positions, and I know that a lot of money is spent on, you know, these jobs that we cannot fill, that we cannot fill because they're not desirable. So, yeah, that is also something that I truly consider, so I'm hoping that we really come up with something really quick and implement it as soon as possible, yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, my staff works tirelessly to try to fill all positions, and so we talk about cost, but we also talk about time. I have, I've had teams go to various job fairs to represent our district to try to recruit and attract and retain employees through Laco, Cerritos College. We have offered our own job fairs and recruitment fairs in partnership with CACA, and we're going to continue to do that, and looking forward to more of those opportunities as well.
Thank you, I have three comments, I guess, one is, I'm just concerned that with such a high number set aside, while it's true we're not spending the money if somebody's not there, it does affect our budget because it's not available for things that's set aside. You know, it'll be put back into the general budget if it's not all spent, but meanwhile, it's off to the side. With such strong structural support for that, which we need by law, right, if we have an IEP, we have to fulfill it by federal law, but that kind of disincentivizes us doing the job. It's like the kid who says, "Why should I bring a pencil, Mr. Brashov? You're going to give me one anyway." Right, when there's always, when there's always a number that high, and I, I'm not saying that there are, you know, yes, district staff is working very hard, and I think the structural things is, but I'm concerned that a number that high leads to a, well, we got to back up. If it doesn't happen, it's okay, we got to back up, and so, you know, I understand we're in a position that we can't break the law, right? We have, we have to keep federal special education law, but I'd like to see that number drastically reduced in upcoming years, because we do bring our own pencil. My second comment is, yeah, having three kids in childcare right now, I can't imagine taking a three-hour job for people that need childcare needs, you can't, you can't pay half a day of childcare on that. And so, I did have one question, and on the permit process, Ms. Hargie was mentioning that the permits take a while, can you explain who does these permits? And is it us, is it state counties? Who does the permits and how does it work and why is there a delay?
Were you referring to preschool?
For preschool, there's a certain degree, so because they are more, they're more strict, Laco's very strict, you have to pass all these tests, you have to have a permit clearance. So in order for you to do that, to get on board, to start your job, you have to be cleared. So there's about three to four of these positions that were hired, but they have not started because their permit has not been cleared.
But does Laco clear them? Is that a Laco issue?
It's for Laco, there's no process for that.
Okay, that's helpful.
But how do they know when they're cleared?
Okay, is there anything on our end, I guess, that we could do to, you know, speed along that process, or is it kind of, we've done everything we can and just waiting for them to get back to us?
That's preschool.
Yeah, I'm referring to preschool, yes, is there anything on our end, is there anything that we do on that, or is it simply we submit the thing and now we're just waiting for them?
I'll have to review with the team if there are any opportunities to shore up that gap. If there were, I'm sure we would have explored those by now, but I'll double-check.
Okay, I just hadn't heard of that issue. And then I did want to ask the special ed expert in the room, Ms. Kristin Pinta, her thoughts on this matter, since this is, she lives and breathes this stuff. People are online and would love to hear you.
Hi, you're very kind to say, expert. Dr. Brashov, Mr. Consio, board and guests, thank you for having me come up here and speak on this matter. It seems to me that the idea is that this is for a year. It says in our agenda till June of 2026. So, the idea is that we're covering ourselves while we're looking at the matter, and you can see that Dr. Gatto and Dr. Baker are very much understanding what the issue is. Mr. Wood as well, Dr. Wood? Dr. Wood? Yes? They very much understand the issue, and there's a lot of things that go into it as you're, as you're in the classroom, so, you know, these do, these do change. And so, part of, part of the issue is that, you know, we're trying to create an environment where the student is able to be on their own without an aide. So, you know, if we're in an IEP meeting and we cut hours, like, that means something to somebody's family, you know? So we want to make sure that we have space for them to go either somewhere else or to work within the school during those extra hours, so that when they're not with the child, that they have a place to go and they're not losing their job because we cut it from the IEP. Same on the other way, if we need somebody, like we said, we need someone right now, and that's what this company is. It's someone that can come right now that has all of the qualifications, excuse me, I get nervous, that has all the qualifications and can come in right away, but they're not supposed to stay. It's like a temp. And it's, it's somebody that, you know, we can call and we can have them come in, and like we said, there is some overhead in it, but we are not hiring these people forever. They're there for the law, they're there for the moment, and yes, it's disruptive sometimes, but it's more disruptive to not have the support. So, it's better to have somebody there who can do the job and support you, rather than nobody there in a classroom full of students who are just in need.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion on this item? Good, Slank Walter?
I wonder if it would be an option to have a list of people who have already been through the permit process, people that we're pulling from, you know, to fill these positions, that I don't know who pays for that process, but I don't know if the district does, you know, maybe we only pay for it if they've been hired, but that would be something that would certainly speed, speed things up.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand, Art, can you clarify, you mean a list of folks who?
Yeah, if we have people that are, that go through the permit process, apply for the position, go through the permit process while they're waiting to be hired in a preschool position, so that once they are hired, they're ready to go.
Yeah, I think they, I think what's happening is that they're not cleared, so we can't put anyone in a classroom that the state doesn't clear. We have two childhood experts here, so they're both dying to respond to that.
For preschool, when they don't have their permit, they're applying for their permit, they could get a special waiver, it's $50, but of course, if they don't have the money to pay for it, once it goes to CTC and they have it, then they're able to apply for that waiver through Laco, but it's $50, and they'll give them an emergency permit. So I don't know if it's something that we could do. I know with CD programs, they don't, they don't pay for those, but is there any unrestricted funds that we could use? It's $50 and they'll get a, it's a temporary permit, and it's only temporary, of course, because they're going through the process and it takes about two months for them to get their permits. So that would be something that we could look into, I mean, it's $50, it's not that much. By then, they already have submitted all their paperwork to CTC, it's just waiting for their permit, but we could take them with that emergency permit.
However, that's not the only expense, so they have the coursework and then they have the background check and there's other expenses, but usually candidates applying for the child about permits, they pay their own fees.
There's also stipends, so they have to learn about the stipends, I'll tell you more about those stipends right now, because they could get it for free. So, just FYI, but there is a waiver. If they already submitted their application, because some of them might have already submitted their application, but it takes two months. Exactly, two, so then what we, what could be done is they get an emergency permit because they already submitted to CTC, but it's $50 and it goes through Laco.
They should not be hiring them until it's completely cleared.
That's probably our internal policy, correct?
You see, timeline, that doesn't, there isn't really a lot that we can do in the district.
Can we, board members, would you mind if we followed up on just the, what the challenge is with the emergency permits, the list and all of that? It sounds like we can take this information back to the team and really kind of do a deeper dive and maybe follow up in a board communication?
Thank you, yes, thank you for the, your expertise and the sharing with us. All right, with that in mind, can I get a motion for item 19H?
Okay, we have a motion and a second, can we do roll call, please?
Ms. Free?
This is a very hard yes, because we need it, but, yeah, yes.
Ms. Mascler?
Yes.
Mrs. Langenwalter?
Yes.
Mr. Rios?
Yes, with the understanding that we do have some work to be done to get, make sure we get the right people in.
Dr. Vedari?
Yes.
Dr. Consio?
No.
And Dr. Brashov?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-1.
Thank you. Now proceed to item 20A. Again, we'll need a motion in a second before we can begin a discussion on this item. Can I get a motion on item 20A?
I make a motion?
Second.
Mr. Eduardo, can you go over this process with us as far as the negotiation and on how we purchase these vehicles and how we decide which vehicles we purchase? I know it is a lot of money, we're purchasing a lot of vehicles, and then if you can help us understand what the Special Reserve 40 is and where that money comes from and how much is in there as well. And what are these funds normally used for? Yeah, and I saw that we have some new vehicles and then some used vehicles, so how do we decide on that as well? Is it based on the inventory or what is it?
Okay, quite a few questions and one question, so let me just go to the beginning. This money is not from the general fund, so it is not affecting the projected deficit spending. It comes from what is known as a Fund 40. Fund 40 is a fund that we use for this type of equipment and for major improvements when we have emergencies. A few times I use this example that if this roof collapses and we had to react, I don't know, a million dollars to fix it, then I can grab the money from there. Now, the balance on that account is over $10 million, more or less. We get money from, we put those monies in there when we use, when we rent some facilities, so this account has been in place for the last probably 15, 18 years. And it's not used really to hire employees, it's mainly for buildings and then equipment. The reason why we have in this item right here, and it's like 1.7 million dollars, all the money will be coming from Fund 40. This is what is known, when we have a Y fleet, Y fleet means that all the vehicles that we have under safety, ITS, safety facilities, and the, all these vehicles that we have are probably from 1995, 1997, so they're basically all. And the newest items that we have are like from 2008, so when you have vehicles, at one point, we're going to have to replace these vehicles. We can fix them, we can fix them, we can fix them, but then when the vehicles get too old, then it creates an impact on transportation, because we have our own mechanics. We bring the vehicles and they're supposed to be servicing all the buses first, but because the vehicles are so old, now we're waiting for parts. Now, on this item, if you see the last column, the, those vehicles, all these are replacements, by the way, and these are brand-new vehicles, we never buy used vehicles, and we never buy used equipment, because we want all the guarantees for the next two, three or four years. So total, we're buying 25 vehicles, three are for safety and then 19 for MNO, then we have one for ITS and two for facilities. Out of the three vehicles from safety, for example, there was one that, and I do remember this one, because the vehicles that they have now, I was the one that pulled a PO through maybe like 10, 11 years ago. I don't know if you still remember this name, and I think it was a Chevy, it was called Crown Victoria. So it was a vehicle that you can fit 14 people sitting in, kind of in the car, so that vehicle never got replaced, so this is one of them. And then, so these vehicles are reaching over 100,000 miles already. So, we went from these models, and this is nothing that we came up with this plan yesterday. This plan started, for example, on safety, okay, going back to safety, because out of the 25 vehicles, only three for safety. This plan started probably like two years ago, because the price tag is so big, it's 1.7 million dollars. So, we came up with this plan, and the way that we purchase them, we just don't go to a dealer and buy them. We can do it two different ways. We can come out with our own bid, and then the bid will be open for like three or four months, and we can say, you know, we need to buy three vehicles, one Super Duty, and then we can list all the items that, I mean, that we need, or we can do what is known as a piggyback item. So we are piggybacking from contracts from the state, so these are negotiated prices already, and it's what is known as the CMAS contract from the state. So we are using, they already did the work on negotiating these prices down as much as they can, I mean, I mean, this is the state, and we actually are allowed to piggyback of that pricing to use it for us. And then that's what we came up with this plan, and I think I can answer all your questions.
I think you got them all. Yeah, you didn't even write anything down, you just have it right here. But yeah, I misunderstood, some have new in the beginning, like new 2026, but some don't, so I guess I misunderstood the ones that don't have new on there as used, but, yeah.
No, and I can assure you, rule number one, we usually don't buy used equipment.
Okay, yeah, because some of these are 100,000, you know, over 100,000, yeah.
And all these vehicles are really for our employees that work at MNO, safety, grounds, and so these vehicles are used day and night.
Wow, I'm really glad we're finally getting some new vehicles for them. Yeah, driving a car older than my kids is pretty bad.
Okay, Mr. Rios?
Yes, yeah, I know we're talking about a lot of money here, and looking at safety and looking at what we need, I mean, we talk about safety and we talk about different things, making sure. I know that I've driven by when our school safety is either managing the drop-offs or the pickups, and they don't even have light bars. I mean, they're standing out there in the middle of, you know, trying to keep the flow of traffic going, and the day we were at, also walking the transportation center, that was one of the biggest things, I think, that they told us, right? That they have to, parts are so old that they pretty much have to manufacture their own or re-cut it, and he says, after a while, the nuts and bolts don't grab, and so they are constantly coming back. That was one of the things, but my main concern is, we're looking at making sure everybody's safe and having the, our school safety officers stopping cars or moving things in the middle of the street with no light bars, no anything, and. And I heard it was more expensive to buy the light bar for that than it was to actually fix one. And they're not available because they're so old, the, the, the way they strap on the, the, I mean, and we all know that because of our cars, right? Uh, we used to get in there and used to do them ourselves. Now, uh, it doesn't work that way. You gotta take them in. But, um, definitely, um, I see where, where that, uh, the need is. And I'm glad you did, you did do your homework and, and you went out and, and tried a bit and make sure that, you know, we're not paying as much as we can. And I know that we salvaged those. I don't know how much money we do get back on them, right? But it's still, uh, I, I can see the need, especially the transportation, um, the mechanic that was telling us. He's the only one that knows how to do it. The rest of the guys don't know. Only one, one of our mechanics knows how to be able to rebuild a hundred percent the mortar.
Can we resell them as classics?
Uh, Dr. Consio, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay. Any other colleague? Okay, I have, uh, just, I, I think the example you gave, uh, Mr. Santiana is very apropos of this money is for emergency, you know, repairs, you know, if a roof collapses and the fact is we've been talking extensively about our roofs over the past, you know, uh, couple of years and the amount of, uh, roof repairs that needed and kind of the, I feel like a, we're triaging, right? Uh, the, um, the roofs that are twenty years, thirty years, and there's always these emergencies. And, you know, it's going to rain tomorrow, I, I guess, you know, after tomorrow, but we'll see which of the roofs, uh, from last year, uh, that we triaged and put, put, uh, you know, put off, need emergency repairs. I, I'm uncomfortable with spending twenty percent, almost twenty percent of our reserve funds for, um, new vehicles when there's going to be emergencies. Like, we're going to have roofs, we're going to have people repairing roofs as an emergency Wednesday morning guaranteed. And that puts our people at risk. I, this is the kind of thing that can be triaged. I think, you know, if we're going to triage anything, it's not triage roofs. Um, some of the cars I'm sure are so old that can be purchased little by little, you know, like, let's focus on those. Um, I'm uncomfortable getting twenty-five cars at once, um, with money that we will need, like tomorrow. So, uh, I, I don't think this is a good idea to spend this much money now. I, I would, I would support, you know, perhaps a, a reduced amount focusing on the, on something else, but we're going to be spending many hundreds of thousands, perhaps millions, on emergency repairs over the next winter season. Uh, out of that same fund, I, I assume. So, um, thank you.
Uh, yeah, the, uh, this money is enough from the reserves from, from the general fund. And it's not affecting the, uh, when we go and fix a roof because we have a maintenance and operations account. That's, that's over nine million dollars. Now, of course, that one also pays for the employees. But also keep in mind that the, the board authorized us to, uh, to use twenty million dollars worth of bond monies, which is, it's around seventy and a half, eighty million dollars to be exclusively for roofs. And what is either fortunate or unfortunate when, when you have equipment is at one point, we had to replace them. So, uh, so this one, uh, if, if, if we didn't have these vehicles, then it's like, a, a few times I've heard some comments that people don't have the, uh, people don't have the right tools. Well, these are their tools. If, if we wouldn't give them the tools, the, the, these vehicles, then how can they go repair things?
I'm asking, uh, Eduardo, just to explain again the difference between where this money is coming from and how it doesn't impact our bottom line and reserves. It's not the same, uh, component. Can you just share that again?
On the, uh, when, when you see on, on page twenty-eight, which is budget source, uh, usually when we buy things from the general fund, we'll say general fund. And this is not from the general fund. It does not create a deficit spending on our general fund. Uh, it's completely outside of the general fund. It's when, for example, when, when I talk about nutrition services, they buy equipment, they can hire employees and whenever they spend those monies, it has no impact on the general fund because they're completely, uh, completely excluded or separated.
Oh, Eduardo, can you let us know again where these funds come from?
We collect these monies from rentals that we've been had for the last ten, fifteen, twenty years. So those being, uh, amounts that have been saved because then the, uh, if the general fund cannot handle some expenditures, then this is our cushion.
Wait a minute. So you're saying that this money is coming from rentals? Now, I'm, I'm just getting a little confused. Where, where is this money coming from?
When, when we collect these monies at the Consio, uh, on, on the yearly basis, we have, uh,
From our property rentals, you mean?
Yes, I'm sorry, property rentals, I'm sorry, I, I, I can't.
Okay, kinda like the Hoxsey deal and what we have with Viola, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I have a question. So if we, if we use the one, one point seven million for the cars, how much do we still have on that fund forty left over?
Well, if we had to.
I just need to know because that's gonna, that, that's gonna determine because if we don't have that much money left, then we don't want to use all this money.
No, 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 see, the, uh, after this purchase, we still have over ten million dollars left. And then again, this money is getting replenished as we collect monies on these rentals as, as the Consio indicated. We would not do something that is as risky like this because it's, I mean, because it's needed now. I mean, again, if we are in three or four vehicles, we're buying twenty-five.
I'm just thinking about the safety of the employees that are driving these older cars. How about their safety?
Um, I would share one, I mean, one example and then the, uh, even, I remember this item popped during, uh, a few times on negotiations a few months ago and I even shared with the, uh, with, with one of the board members, I had a chance to ride on one of the vehicles and, and, and the floor of the vehicle, it was almost transparent because I could see the road.
Like the Flintstones? Like the Flintstones?
Well, uh, so then the, uh, I mean, we, we're talking really old vehicles over here. And, and then again, uh, if we didn't have to buy twenty-five, we wouldn't. But then this is what happens when you have, uh, buses, when you have a wide fleet, at one point, we are going to have to replace them. It, it's, it's just inevitable.
Yes, go ahead.
And did I hear you correctly when you said, right now, we have a balance of around ten million? Once we spend this, we'll have eight point three something?
No, no, once we spend this, then we still have around ten million.
Oh, okay. And is that ten million reported as part of our reserve?
Uh, not, not under the, the, the general fund.
No.
No.
Special reserves only for capital, like emergencies.
Capital, yeah.
Just a clarification, you did mention that, um, the measure G, we reserve twenty million, but I recall that that wasn't, we still had to triage there. Twenty million wasn't enough for all the roofs. It was enough for the thirty-year roofs. Perhaps the twenty-year? I don't recall exactly, but, um, there is a whole, you know, triage list of roofs. Um, and yes, I, I mean, I, I know that we do need to replace them. I would like to see that spread out a little so that we can reserve, so, uh, so that we can reserve it, uh, for other emergencies that will surely come up.
Uh, the, if, um, I really don't want to add more into the conversation, right? But then twenty B, it's, uh, it's additional equipment that mainly for the custodians. You know how we build the, uh, how we build a new gyms? So they need a special equipment.
Yes.
And then grounds also need, uh, need more equipment. So when you add the two packages, I mean, we're only talking two point three million dollars.
Yeah.
No, I mean, of course, the board can decide not to buy them, so we just wouldn't buy them. And, but then the, uh, and then, and then we'll do, I mean, there is a weekend.
Yeah, but we, we did approve twenty B.
I'm sorry?
We already approved twenty B.
Yeah, no, no, the, uh, uh, I, I was, I was linking in, in the so-called investment vehicles. Both are coming from the same place.
I got it. Thank you.
Eduardo, really quick, just to clarify, these can, the, uh, this fund forty is only used for improvements and, um,
And when we make these, these purchases, uh, big equipment, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we can probably rent it, but then the, uh, I mean, at one point, the rental will become really expensive. You know?
Again, uh, these vehicles, and I understand the concern about doing it all at once. Um, these are for our staff members, right? And so at some point, our equipment, our, uh, transportation, it's going to be so old, it's going to get to the point where we're going to be, you know, in a position where we're going to have to make emergency purchases. What you see the team doing is trying to get ahead of that, using fund forty to do that work. And again, none of us are driving those vehicles. It's our staff members who are in those cars. So if something's breaking down or they can't get to a school to fix something because we didn't replace a car in time when we knew it needed to be, you know, that's on us, but it does impact the school ultimately. So there's a trickle-down effect if we don't get ahead of this stuff. And just like we have to fix the structure of our, um, personnel system with regard to special education, we've got to make sure that our guys in MNO and transportation and safety are taken care of, you know? And so for us to be putting these guys in those kind of cars or old vehicles is just not acceptable. And we have to catch it before it's too late. So I understand the concern, um, but what you see is our team trying to get ahead of things before it gets to the point where somebody is broken down and they can't go fix, you know, whatever it is that the maintenance request is.
Thank you for that clarification, uh, Dr. Baker, and I really appreciate it, Eduardo, how you're looking ahead. And I'd rather be proactive than reactive in this area.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and I just want to clarify, I do appreciate these purchases and all the effort taken, uh, to get this, this kind of price for all of these twenty-five. And I think also what it does to our employees is to really boost their morale as well because they've been driving these old vehicles for a very long time. So, um, I, I understand. Yeah, thank you.
Sure. Oh, unless anybody has another comment. With that, let's get a roll call.
Ms. Free?
Yes.
Mrs. Mescola?
Yes.
Mrs. Langenwalter?
Yes.
Mr. Rios?
Yes, and, uh, let's make sure we ran out all those properties we have emptied out because if we can make more money, we replace this money. There's a lot of properties that could still run out or lease out.
Dr. Vedari?
Absolutely, yes.
Dr. Consio?
Yes.
Sorry, that was a yes?
Yes, that was a yes.
Yes, thank you. And Dr. Breisoff?
No.
Motion passes six one.
That takes us to, uh, item number twenty-four A. Employee complaint, the first reading. Uh, can I get a motion?
So move.
So move. Second.
Do a second, okay. My only, uh, I'd like to, I wasn't clear as if the language was there, but there was a comment made, uh, by a legal counsel during our public, uh, you know, meeting, uh, on, on this item, the policy committee meeting, that, um, we could choose not to go forward with the hearing and I want to make sure there's language in there that does not leave us that option. Uh, I mean, I don't think, we've never, we've never taken that option, not to have a hearing if requested, but I think it should not be optional. I think, um, notice and opportunity to be heard by, uh, by staff who request the next level of appeal is essential. And I just want to make sure, while there is already language regarding, uh, you know, it goes before a superintendent's designee as to the, kind of the complaint officer and we, um, we get a report. I just want to make sure that report is not a substitute for the actual hearing. It may be informational, um, but our job is not to, you know, rubber stamp it. Our job is to see the, see the information. So I, I would, I would like to see the language included in there that does not leave the option for the board to, um, to deny a hearing, once, once the other processes have, have gone through.
President Breisoff, both of your concerns are reflected in this. Um, so if you look at page four of the rule, so the, um, the appeal goes to the board at a regular or special board meeting. So we struck, may uphold the findings of the superintendent or designee, designee without hearing the complaint?
Oh, good, okay, thank you. I, I misunderstood that from the legal counsel's comment that we still would have that option. So I guess he, that almost struck, thank you.
Correct. And then the information that's provided essentially by me or my designee to the board is for informational purposes for the board to hear the matter in closed session.
Thank you. Any other comments on item twenty-four A? All right, uh, with that, can I get a roll call?
Ms. Free?
Yes.
Mrs. Mescola?
Yes.
Mrs. Langenwalter?
Yes.
Mr. Rios?
Yes.
Dr. Vedari?
Yes.
Dr. Consio?
Yes.
And Dr. Breisoff?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. This takes us to board communication. Let's offer the consent agenda. Uh, board communications, um, start with, uh, Dr. Vedari.
Thank you, President Breisoff. Good evening. I, uh, serve on the policy subcommittee and I, uh, attended. I really appreciated the discussions and the outcomes. I continue to have my one-on-one calls with Dr. Baker. I attempted to visit, uh, an elementary school, one in particular, and it just was not possible. However, I am looking forward to visiting other schools throughout the month of October and through the end of the year. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rios?
Yes, thank you. Well, besides, um, the Halloween parade, um, we also had the kickoff for the, um, Pink, the town pink, which is, uh, breast cancer awareness. Um, for everybody that's out there, um, it's been eight years since the city started doing it and it's been growing. Um, I know that there's a challenge between Norwalk La Mirada and Little Lake School District. See who can raise the most. It all falls on Dr. Baker. And obviously, I know there's other times where, uh, individually myself and I know that, uh, Eduardo has done the, where, um, pink, right, when, uh, men wear pink, uh, and so those are kind of like extra. And so that was a, a good thing. And then the district has been participating in that, uh, pretty much since the beginning. And, um, also looking forward to all the events coming up for the, the, uh, the Muertos and, uh, Halloween, the different things at different schools. I, I really like to walk through those and enjoy and see the kids out there having fun and enjoying. And the other thing that, uh, it's the state of the cities coming up, so that would be this Thursday. And I think you have to call the city if you want a ticket that says it's, it's free to the community. And then, uh, what else? That's pretty much it as far as that goes. I haven't done too much school visits. I know I did the last ones with Ms., but I, I need to set up a few to come up with that.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Langenwalter?
I have continued to have my one-on-one check-ins with Dr. Baker. Um, we had a good budget policy committee meeting and were able to, um, review the things that was, were reported out this evening by Dr. Consio. And, um, today I, uh, cast a vote for our, our district regarding, uh, school district organization, um, within our region in Los Angeles, Southern California. And, um, I also enjoyed the fall concert at Benton Middle School on October eighth, which included, um, a group playing guitar, choir of a couple of different levels, jazz ensemble and the, um, band. And it, it was, it was excellent. Looking forward to some other concerts and, um, some of the other cultural things going on this, uh, this season. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mescola?
I was very busy this past two weeks. I visited John Glenn and Southeast Academy, had an opportunity to, um, speak to Dr. Padilla as well as Master Sergeant Schaefer.
as well as Master Sergeant Schaefer. I was very happy to see that they're working together. I know it's been a tough few months, but it seems like we're moving forward, so it was really nice to see that. I also had a chance to meet with Marta, which was really nice. We had a really good conversation about things that are happening, and we're hoping that are going to change soon regarding transfers of students. So that's something that we're going to be working on, hopefully with Dr. Baker. My one-on-ones, we've all had one-on-ones with Dr. Baker, and we really enjoy having those, because it's that time where we're able to talk about everything that we've seen or discussed with other schools. And it just gives us a good perspective of what she's working on and what she's going to help us move towards. I visited the Central Kitchen, and I met with Alexis and Jessica and her lead, Margarita Urtes. It was amazing to see them. It was during the, I went late in the afternoon, so I have to go back. I promised to go back during the morning, so that I could see them in action. But they have a really nice team. I feel that, I know we had some bumps, you know, with the past, and we're moving forward. With Jessica and Alexis, it seems like we're moving forward, and it's nice to see that they're working as a team, and we're hoping that that continues. I will go visit more often. I already promised to go during the morning, so I'll be doing that soon. I participated in the AXA Title IX training. It was very lengthy, very lengthy. I'm like, did they say it was going to go all the way to one? Yeah, it went all the way to one. But it was interesting. It was good information, and we learned a lot. Rossa was there, I think Jose was in there, and also Espy. So we learned, we learned a lot about Title IX and how to help and support the process. I participated in the PTA Council silent auction. As always, it's very fun. I ended up with two big baskets, broke my piggy bank, but oh, well, you know, it's for good cause. And lastly, I participated in the Arturo Sanchez Halloween Parade. It's always nice to see our families out there and just having fun. So it was really, really fun. I try not to miss those, because it's just a nice way of families seeing us and seeing that we're a part of the community. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Ms. Free?
Thank you, Ms. Brashoff, President Brashoff, sorry. I had the opportunity to visit Escalona Elementary with Dr. Nena Okpara, and she was amazing, showing me around the entire campus. And I met so many wonderful staff, and I got to see the students in action out in the playground. So I just want to give her a big shout out and thank you for her hospitality. I really appreciate her taking that time to meet with me. As my colleague, Ms. Mesqua, said, we participated in Title IX training. And I've had these Title IX trainings, but not at, you know, I guess, higher ed is what I'm more familiar. But there's not a whole lot different to it, but yes, more, more policies and processes, you know, because we're dealing now with underage students. So that was really interesting and lengthy. But, you know, I kind of liked this policy stuff, so it wasn't too bad for me. I was also able to attend my very first PTA silent auction at Lamarada High School. That was a lot of fun. I got to sit down and meet some new teachers there and principals. And being part of the board committee as well, and I won't get into too many details, because it's already kind of been announced, but I'm part of the superintendent and board evaluation committee, as well as the board policy committee. So those were interesting, and there's a lot of work taking place for that. I was also able to spend some time at Morrison Elementary with Principal Patrick Lasso, and he was able to give me the tour. I was able to go into the classrooms and assist in passing out some perfect attendance awards. So that was really great, to be able to be there, interact with the students as well. They're fantastic, by the way. And one of the, last week, I was able to visit Dolores Huerta. And we were actually met there with a representative from the Dolores Huerta Foundation. So she was able to visit the site with us, and she was really impressed on all the work that is taking place there, what we do there for our kids, for the community. And we gave her the tour and let her know some of the improvements that we're going to be making. So like I said, she was so impressed. She's emailed us back and said, hey, we want to participate. And some more events that are taking place, and I want to take some of my colleagues as well. So that was great. And so thank you, Mr. Santiano, for being there, Michelle Centeno, Mr. Ramirez. I hope I'm not missing anybody. Ethan, oh, thank you, yes. How could I miss her? You know, she's like the star of it all. But last, this past Friday, I also attended Norwalk High School homecoming game, which was so much fun. They have the parade, and, you know, I showed up by myself, so I wasn't really sure, like, what am I, whom I going to talk to here, where I go? But I want to thank Ms. Natalia Oladese, because she took me under her wing, and she showed me around, and she let me know the parade is coming, stand here, stand there, if you want to take some pictures here. So thank you so much. She didn't have to do that, but she did. So I really appreciate her hospitality as well. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Dr. Consio?
Thank you. So my report will be short. If you haven't noticed, I am not physically there, in spirit, on the spirit of Christmas Eve. No. But unfortunately, I'm currently serving with the US Army, so here in San Antonio. But just two things real briefly. So I was able, or three things. I was able to attend the silent auction when I was home for a little bit. Always great seeing PTA and then our administrators out there. I didn't, Ms. Mesqua, I didn't break the bank this year, but I did walk away with a basket. I think last year, they got me good. So I got to work on my silent auction skills, so hopefully, we get those prices up and we get more of our district leadership to take all those baskets home. So Ms. Mesqua and I have a game plan for next year. Second, along with my colleagues, we're able to attend the superintendent's evaluation committee and also the finance and budget committee. I mean, they're very important, because we're able to dive deeper. I invite anyone to please come to them or listen on to those meetings. You're really able to get nuances on some of the things that we're having discussions on, and it alleviates us to be able to focus more on different type of business during our normal business meetings. And finally, I want to say thank you to Ali Hernandez for doing the pledge of allegiance tonight. I think, you know, Ali's a prime example of just excellence of our graduates, and just really a true community servant leader. So thank you so much for coming out, not just representing WRD, but more importantly, representing Norwalk, and looking forward to your continued success as one of our community leaders. And, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you. For my report, I, along with my colleagues, attended a Title IX training on Zoom. Very informative, actually, I think it's teams, but very informative, very detailed. I didn't expect that level of detail. Wow. I, you can't pay me enough to take your job, Dr. Gata? Wow. And thank you to all the staff members at our district that deal with this day in, day out, and that keep our students safe. I also had a meeting with town reps, the high school director and elementary school director, very informative meeting. Good time for sharing concerns, sharing victories. And, yeah, I would encourage my colleagues to continue the, being available for these meetings. It's very important. That concludes my report. With that, we are adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn? We have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you.